Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you all so, so much for coming tonight. I really appreciate to see how many people are in attendance. And you have some feedback there, so. But anyway, so before we get started, there's some really important people in the room. I want to make sure that I introduce everyone so that you know who's here with me tonight. So we have to my left, Jesus Morejo, he is our city manager. Teresa Lamar Sarno, our deputy city manager. Mary Savage Dunham, our P and Z, our planning and zoning director. Bridget Keane, she is our senior planner. And on my right, we have Colt Schwert, he is our assistant public works director and our city engineer. Brad Keane, our assistant parks and rec director. Kevin Mariagick, our utilities director. And in the front, I have Chief Del Toro. Elizabeth Hertz, our assistant city attorney. Jennifer Davis is our community redevelopment agency director. Kelly Boatwright is our parks and rec senior project manager. And I saw David Graham, our assistant city manager in the back there, somewhere way in the back there. Okay. And so we also have some other important community leaders and partners in the audience tonight. And we have fire chief Nate Sparra. And our beloved chief will be retiring next month, so we have also our incoming fire chief, Jeff Lee. So you're all going to want to get to know Chief Lee, if you don't already. Our school district representatives are here, and that's Dr. Wilder and Lawrence Overleary. And so basically, I've asked the team to be here because in the end, after I go through the entire presentation, any technical questions that there are, or any questions that I need help answering, I have the experts here in the room to be able to answer those questions for you. Also want to mention in the back of the room, we have our neighborhood services director, Carmen Capazudo here, and the team. And we have City University. And for all of you who don't know what City University is, it is our city program that we offer for free for six weeks. And it's in the evening. And you get to learn about all the city departments and how our city operates. They talk about budgeting, everything under the sun that you can think of. And then at the end, we have a celebration. And then you all would get to be ambassadors of the city to spread all the good information that we have to share. So if anyone is interested in City University, you can go to the back of the room and sign up with our team back there. And we also have Keep Port St. Lucie Beautiful in our Adapa Street program. They're here as well. So, all right. So to get started, over the last few years, as you all know, and as you all have seen, we've seen very rapid growth here in Port St. Lucie, and particularly here in the Tradition area, or what's better known also as the Southwest Annexation area. And so just quickly, raise your hand if you've been here over 10 years. Raise your hand if you've been here less than 10 years. Ah, see this? This is why we're here tonight. And if you're new to the city within the last year. Okay, all right. So because we have such rapid growth, and because we have so many people who are in here in these different time spans, and wanted to make sure that we all had an opportunity to get together so you to learn about this entire area. Because there's a lot of questions, there's been a lot of comments, concerns about what's been happening. And so I want to make sure that we're taking any misinformation that's out there and addressing it right off the bat. Because not only for myself, but for the council, we want to make sure that you all are informed as much as possible about what's going on. And so to get started on the actual presentation, if you take a look at the slides behind me, Port St. Lucie, when it was, right before it was founded in the late 1950s, this is what was being sold by General Development Corporation, who was the founders of Port St. Lucie. So they were marketing Port St. Lucie to people who were going to be retired from the northern states for $10 down and $10 a month for a quarter acre lot. And where we are right now was not part of Port St. Lucie. Port St. Lucie was east of 95, and all the way out east. And this was not part of it. Neither was St. Lucie West. St. Lucie West was not either. So we're going to talk about that as we get into it. The original city, like I said, in 1961, was incorporated as a pre-platted community of 80,000 quarter acre lots. And like I said, St. Lucie West and this entire Tradition area was not part of the city till much later. So since the late 1960s, our city has seen growth with a 33% increase in population over the past 10 years. And according to the state of Florida, as of April 1st of last year, 2022, our population was 224,905 people. And in the last year, between 2021 and 2022, 11,000 residents have moved to our city. And that includes some of you who raised your hand. So we've grown a lot in a very short time. And in terms of population, we are the seventh largest city in the state of Florida. And in terms of landmass, we are the third largest city in the state of Florida. And we're very lucky that considering our size and our population, our city has continued to maintain the ranking of the safest large city in the state of Florida for well over a decade now. And we will continue to be. So if you look at the timeline, our landmass has grown from pre-1960, and then again, founded in 1961, from 37 square miles to 121 square miles. We have over 900 miles of roadway. And most of that is all city roads. It's kind of rare in most Florida cities. You see a good mix of county roads and state roads combined within those cities, but we're unique, and majority of our roads are all city roads. So I want to talk about two areas in the city that are, or have developments of regional impact, or what I'm going to refer to with an acronym of DRIs. And so like I mentioned, about 30 years ago, St. Lucie West was annexed into the city. And we all know the location there. And where we are right now was considered the Southwest Annexation. And this month, 20 years ago, this area was annexed into the city and founded. And so if you ask what is a development or regional impact, or what is a DRI? A DRI is a large area of property under a common ownership, which is master planned. And it's reviewed by the local government, and then other agencies like the state, and is ultimately improved with entitlements. And those entitlements are developmental rights. And the DRIs designate how much commercial, residential, park, school, and emergency service sites, along with roads and utilities, and what will be required. So in this, you'll see that where we are now, there are five DRIs between Crosstown Parkway and Becker Road. And there's Tradition, Western Grove, Southern Grove, Riverland, and Wilson Grove DRIs. And in total, these five that are located in this entire Southwest Annexation area have been approved for 33,502 residential units. And I want to note that residential is a combination of not just single family, but also multifamily. And to date, of all the five, only 30% of the entitled residences have been built. And this leaves roughly 70%, or 23,000 homes that will be built in these five DRIs in the future. And while that revelation may be shocking, it's really important to note that when planning for these DRIs, the consideration of all the future services has been incorporated into the plans, and we're going to discuss those shortly. So here is a global map of the five DRIs located in the southwestern Annexation area. And as you're going to see, each area was annexed in in 2003 and 2004 with those DRI approvals as far back as 2003 and as recent as 2007. And I'm going to reference this map as we move through each one of those. And this is a lot of information that we packed in, but I wanted to make sure that we had a very, and could provide a very comprehensive look at everything that is going to be, or proposed to be developed in the future. So Tradition, development or regional impact. The entitlements, or developmental rights. 2,700 acres comprising of 60, almost 6,300 dwelling units, which means residential units, 150 hotel rooms, 950,000 square feet of commercial space, 700,000 square feet of office, 90,000 square feet of warehouse, 207 acres of conservation land, and 245 acres of parks or open space. Those are all the entitlements that were granted through the DRI for the Tradition, Tradition DRI. So the area highlighted in yellow is the existing family, single family, townhomes and/or apartments. The areas in red are existing shopping centers, retail, office, and/or industrial businesses. So going to this map, you're going to see the solid yellow. Those areas are future residential, which include the Brindley Slope Side, which are over here, in case you can't see them, right here. And the solid red, right in the middle here, is the last of the neighborhood commercial for the Tradition DRI. It's also important to note that as far as this area is concerned, Tradition DRI is 95% built out. Within this DRI, Tradition Regional Park is located in green, right here. And this park is going to encompass roughly 130 acres, and will be constructed in phases. Phase one is going to begin this summer, and will include multipurpose fields, baseball and softball complex, and a BMX pump track. Brown parcels that you see, all of the brown parcels. All the brown parcels that you see are wetland and upland conservation land. It's not working. Yeah, I can do it. Okay. Is it, you have to turn it up? Now they got me multitasking here. Good? All right. So all the brown parcels, like I said, are wetland and upland conservation. And I know there's been a lot of questions about green space, and you know, where's the green space? So I want to make sure that we showed you all that there are conservation and wetland areas, and these areas cannot be built upon. They need to remain exactly what they are, and they will remain exactly what they are. This red line that you see, this is our Tradition Trail that will be routed through the entire area, and is being built in stages. Okay, so moving on, we're going to look at our school sites. And you're going to see that there are currently three schools located within the Tradition And we have our Palm Point Research Educational School at Tradition. We have Tradition Prep High School and Renaissance K8 at Tradition. Also, we have two VPK preschools at Chesterbrook and Primrose. Moving on to emergency services. Currently, we have one fire station, which is Station 17, and we all know where that is, next to Christ Fellowship. And that is appropriately staffed with the personnel and equipment in order to handle this area. And if there are questions, specific questions later on that I can't answer that are related to fire service or EMS service, we have our chiefs here to help answer those questions. Cleveland Clinic, we all know where Cleveland Clinic is. There's been a lot of questions about hospitals and doctors. And while the city does not control Cleveland Clinic or their hiring, I can share with you that Cleveland Clinic has purchased 40 additional acres from the city of Port St. Lucie in order to build the new hospital tower. It's going to be up to Cleveland Clinic to determine when they're ready and able to do that. At our summer city council workshop, we are going to have Dr. Sasserter from Cleveland Clinic, and the president of HCA St. Lucie Med, and also Tenant Healthcare at our workshop to talk about the future of medical community and what that's going to look like. If you're not familiar with Tenant, Tenant Healthcare is building a 54-bed hospital off Becker Road behind the Veranda Gardens, Veranda Falls Shopping Center. And then they're also going to be building some medical buildings as well in that area. So next, we're going to move on to Western Grove and that DRI. In Western Grove, the entitlements are, there encompasses 1,941 acres. There are 4,000 dwelling units allowed, 200,000 square feet of commercial, 50,000 square feet of office, 50 acres of parks or open space, 95 acres of conservation, and one K through 8 school site. So this depicts again, in yellow, the residential. That's existing now. The solid yellow indicates future residential. And the solid red indicates future shopping, retail, or office space. And it's important to note that the Tradition DRI and the Western Grove are literally right across from each other. Regarding parks, the area called out in green here is additional park space that will tie into Tradition Regional Park. And again, all the brown areas are all the conservation and wetland areas that cannot be built upon. And then we have Tradition Trails yet again. So for school sites, in Western Grove, there's one school site reserved for K8 school. And our school district has planned that for 2027. And then here, which is not in these DRIs, but this is Crosstown Parkway going out west, and that is going to be the site of the new high school that the school district is building. And I believe that is going to be done in fall of 2025. Is that correct? This right here is Crosstown Parkway. Sorry, I didn't have my laser pointer on. And this K8 is planned for 2027. This is in the Western Grove, along North-South A, which is south of Tradition Parkway. For emergency services, Western Grove does have one site for a future fire station. And again, it will be, we'll be making sure that there's the appropriate number of personnel and equipment in order to service the community. And now we're going to move on to Southern Grove. The entitlements in Southern Grove are 3,600 acres with 8,239 dwelling units, 1,051 hotel rooms, 18, oh, I'm sorry, 1.8 million in commercial, 1.4 million in office, 8.7 million in industrial, 1.2 million in research and development for square footages, 300 hospital beds, 116 acres of conservation land, and 80 acres of parks or open space. Well, I have them shown here on the map, if you can see the boundaries. Okay, so this is east of Village Parkway. I'm, I'm sorry, west of Village Parkway, sorry. I'm sorry. The Western Boundaries Community Boulevard. So here you're going to see are the existing residential that's there now. And the existing shopping centers are in red, and retail, office, and industrial businesses. The solid yellow is going to be the future residential, and the solid red is future shopping centers, et cetera. So as you probably all know, we have our Southern Grove Jobs Corridor. And the reason why the city embarked on our Jobs Corridor is because since we were founded as a, really a retirement community way back when, at that time, we did not have appropriate roads, we did not have water and sewer, we didn't have any jobs, really. And so over time, and we've realized that we want to make sure that we provide areas where our citizens can work, live, and play. And so we embarked on a Jobs Corridor, and have been working on that really heavily for the last several years. And this corridor, we have master planned the entire area. And that master plan was really supposed to be over a 20-year planning horizon. But just in the last six years alone, we have seen many businesses come to Port St. Lucie. And I think you're all familiar with a lot of them. With our FedEx is currently operating, that building opened in nine months' time. Amazon is currently open now. Chaney Brothers here is under construction. We have Excel that is under construction right now. They're a wiring manufacturer from Connecticut. Tamco has, is open and has been operating for a few years now, and they're the third largest lighting manufacturer in the country. Oculus Surgical, have they broken ground yet, actually? They did? Okay. It took them a long time. They were approved several years ago, but they're finally breaking ground, and they make surgical equipment for eye surgeries. And as you know, we have Kaiser University and Cleveland. The other things I want to point out is that we have other economic development projects in the works right now. We have Project Apron, and that is a 1.1 million square foot logistics facility, distribution facility. Project Green, same size. I can't tell you their names yet because they're under code names, and we're not ready to, they're not finalized, and they're in the process. But once they become finalized, I'll be able to share that information. Few other projects that we have going on are Project Asgard and Project Eagle as well. So this entire area, the city took over 1,200 acres back in 2017, when Tradition Land Company, who was the prior master developer, decided to turn the property over to the city. And at this, at that time, with those 1,200 acres, again, I said, we had planned that, oh, it's probably going to take about 20 years in order to develop that property and sell it. Well, as of today, we have about 182 acres left. 357 of it is stormwater, is for stormwater capacity, and the 661 acres are what's been sold. And our Jobs Corridor is going to continue to build out over time. And the city does own some parcels that are going to be commercial space. I'll just point them out really quickly. Down here at the corner of Becker, laser, the laser worked. Down here at the corner, this green area, that's commercial space, the city owns that. And the city owns the other parcels as well, that are in the green. Moving on to parks in Southern Grove, there are 80 acres of parks. So Stars and Stripes Park is, they're going to start construction, that Madam E is going to start construction on that next year in 2024. There's also wetlands that I referenced that are near the Dell Webb community, and there's going to be some work done there as far as a trail and some passive experience to give you a good experience with the water that's out there. There'll be a little bit of a boardwalk area, and like I said, other trail sites. There's two additional future parks. And then down at the bottom on Becker Road, off Becker Road, you have So Grow Park. And that is going to be the park that will be the amphitheater site. And I know there's a lot of concern about how this area right here has been, it's been overcrowded with all the events that are going on. And So Grow wasn't planned to be done this quickly, but because of the growth that we have seen, Madam E has shared with the city recently that they're advancing construction of that park in spring of 2025. Moving on to our school sites. So we have two additional K8 sites that are located here. And again, the school district is going to determine when those will be needed to be Emergency services, again, we have our Cleveland Clinic, and then Fire Station 20 along Village Parkway will be done in 2025. I want to just mention that I've been on the St. Lucie County Board of Fire Commissioners for the last 12 years, and I can assure all of you that we have been paying very close attention to the growth. Our chiefs have been paying close attention. We have been making our plans for several years now about the future of the fire district and being able to make sure we're providing services to our citizens as we, as we continue to grow. And so we work on that constantly, and we are deep into those planning stages now. We actually have three fire stations that are going to be in progress almost simultaneously. One will be in Fort Pierce, we'll have a new station at Milner, which is where our fire district headquarters are, and that's off of Midway in the St. James area, or just west of St. James area. And then of course, the one right along Village Parkway. And again, they will all be staffed with the appropriate personnel and equipment and vehicles necessary to serve all the citizens. So I'm going to move on to Riverland now, and we're going to go a little bit more out west. And this is west of Community Boulevard, out to Range Line Road. And those entitlements include 3,845 acres, that's the land, and the entitlements are 11,700 dwelling units or residential units, 892,000 square feet of commercial, 1.3 million square feet of research and office, another 1.3 million square feet of light industrial, 327,000 of institutional and civic use, 141 acres of parks and open space, two K8, or two school sites, one K8 and one high school, and one and one 50-acre civic site. And that civic site will be dedicated to the city. Again, here's the yellow to indicate the existing residential that they have happening now. And you probably know that as Valencia K. and Valencia Grove. And they have already started Valencia Walk. And again, here are the future sites for residential. And then, as far as the commercial goes, in this area, right here, they're working on a national grocer right now as an anchor tenant for that site. But they have not released yet who that will be. Soon as we know that, we'll be sharing it with all of you. As for parks, Riverland has three future park sites, including the one that's being constructed now of Community Boulevard, which is Riverland Paseo Park. And that should be done by December of 2024. And it includes a dog park, lighted softball and soccer fields, restrooms, and concession area. And there's a future K-8 school site. And as far as fire stations are concerned, there is a site for, for fire station right here. Now, we're going to move on to the fifth DRI, and that's Wilson Groves. And that is further out west to Range Line Road. And right now, this map is under review through planning and zoning for some changes to it. But the entitlements are there already. And that encompasses 2,727 acres of land, 6,300 dwelling units, 150 hotel rooms, 950,000 square feet of commercial, 700,000 square feet of office, 90,000 square feet of warehouse, 207 acres of conservation land, and 245 acres of parks or open space. Yes, the bottom is Becker Road. And we're going to talk about roads, too. And here we are, this is roads, this is our infrastructure. And so, I wanted to make sure everyone knows, because there's been a lot of questions about, well, who's going to build these roads? Well, the three developers, Madamie, GL, or Riverland, and Akel Holmes are responsible for building out this entire internal roadway network. And I'm going to start with Becker Road. Becker Road is being constructed right now. We've had, we had some issues with some of our developers over the past several years. But we're finally at the point where everyone has come to the agreement that is very important for our city to make sure that we have this east-west corridor out to Range Line Road. So that is under construction right now. And so, if you look at this map, so our, our top priority, the city's top priority, is making sure that we have an interconnected network and that the first two lanes throughout that entire network gets done as soon as possibly can. And so, we have our existing roads. And those roads are in orange. They might be a little bit hard to see. Then our roads that are in yellow are under design or construction right now. And then, these boxes here that are along the roads, I'll point out, they show which developer is responsible for construction, constructing those portions of the road. So the orange is Madamie, what they're responsible for. Riverland is responsible for all the roads in this area that is in blue, out to Range Line. And then Akel Holmes is responsible, or Wilson, in the Wilson Groves DRI, is responsible for all of these roads out to Range Line Road. And how this works is, is that depending on the number of dwelling units that are constructed, triggers when the roads need to be developed. So our city team, between, you know, planning, zoning, and public works, they monitor the development. And they monitor when those triggers happen in order to make sure that these developers are building the roads when they're supposed to build them. So I want to point out that up here is Crosstown Parkway. And as I mentioned, we have the school going out there. And this part of Crosstown is under construction right now. Coulter is responsible for that. And then this, Coulter is also responsible for this portion going out to Range Line. And that is under design right now. So this entire corridor will be completed once that is done. And that's going to be, let's see, Crosstown and Becker by 2025. That'll be the connections for Crosstown up here. And then Becker Road down here. So by 2025, those roads will be complete. Then, in the middle, we have Community Boulevard and Discovery Way. I know we've gotten a lot of questions about, okay, well, it's, it's getting crowded. Are there any plans for that road to be addressed? And yes, we will see intersection improvements in that area in 2027. And then, as far as more lanes are concerned, there are thresholds that have to be met for that as well. And once those thresholds are tripped, then there'll be a determination about adding extra capacity on that road. Is that correct? So now, I'm going to move on to talk about utilities for a few minutes. Because there was a question about our utility system and our water supply. I would like everyone to know that when it comes to planning for water and sewer, with some of our other plans, we take either a 10-year or a 20-year planning horizon. Well, when it comes to our water, that is so important, we look out 50 to 100 years. And it's been that way for, as well, as long as I've been on council and many years before that. And our city manager, Mr. Moreho, was the utility director for, what, 15 years prior to becoming Assistant City Manager and then City Manager. And so, Mr. Mariadjak is now our utility director. And he is in charge of making sure that we have water for the future. So we have utility sites in this entire area. And they include not only our city water and sewer, but there's the Tradition irrigation. And then, there's the FPL site as well. And I've been asked a lot about, well, are we ever going to run out of water? What, what does that look like for us? So our city utility water services department has a total permitted capacity to produce 41.65 million gallons of water a day. And currently, our committed capacity is 24.46 million gallons of water a day. So that means we have 41.3% capacity that is still available for our future customers. And of that 41.65 million gallons, 33.65 million comes from reverse osmosis treatment utilizing wells that pull from the Florida and Aquifer. And the remaining 8 million gallons a day is through lime softening treatment process utilizing superficial or shower or wells. Our Range Line Water Pumping Station will be the site of our next reverse osmosis water treatment plant. And this will be a 10-million-gallon-a-day facility and currently included in the utility capital improvement plan. And the design for that is currently planned to begin in fiscal year 27, '28. So as I mentioned, we're constantly planning for the future, for our water and sewer system. So I want to talk about police real quick, because it's very important on the other side of our first response and emergency services. So as some of you may know, as a result of all the growth in this entire area, we determined about five years ago the importance of coming up with a new policing district, which we call District Five. And we are in the implementation stage of that currently. It is partially operational with two of the four patrol zones that are staffed. Next year's budget, the '23-'24 budget, we have additional 12 positions dedicated to this area. And we're working on that. As you can imagine, and as you probably all know, it is a challenge to get police officers today. And so, we, our team, and through Assistant Chief Del Toro and the entire team and our city manager, they are actively working on plans to make sure that we're doing everything we possibly can to recruit great officers to work for us. And so, that is happening right now. And it also will go into implementation between this year and into our '23-'24 budget year, which starts in October. We are also building a police training facility on the municipal campus at city, next to City Hall, next to the police department, actually, across from City Hall. We are in the process now of going out to bid for the construction of that facility. And then, once we get done with that process later this year, we will figure out, you know, funding. We have $10 million from a bond to put towards it. And we are going to make sure that we can build that facility. So we'll be working on that very quickly. Something that is really needed. So again, taking a global view, our southwestern annexation, you can see how many parks that we have, again, in the green. And the wetlands and upland conservation we have in the brown. And then, the entire span here, which is the Tradition Trail. That goes all the way down to Becker Road. And the, I just want to share the importance of the trail. So as you know, COVID has taught us several things. And one of the things that we've learned through all of our community surveys and conversations that we've had with residents is how important nature and trails are. And to be able to go outside and enjoy the area that you live in and enjoy our community and enjoy some of our wetland and conservation areas. So we wanted to make sure that we are a connected city. And that is why we decided to create and have the vision for the Tradition Trail system that will connect us all the way up to Crosstown, down to Becker Road, and across the entire city. So just wanted to conclude here, this is a global view of all the existing and future land entitlements. And I know that that was a lot of information to digest. And that's why we recorded it. And we're all recording it now, and it'll be available if you want to, if you're ever home and you want to go through it and go slow and digest it. This is going to be available on our city website in the next couple of days. And I really want to thank our city team, who really worked hard on this. We've been planning this for a couple of months now. And also, I do need to give thanks to Mr. Steve Garrett with Lisito and Associates. He did a lot of hard work in this presentation. And I want to make sure he's acknowledged as well, because this took a lot of planning in order to be able to present. All right. Now, we're going to move on to our questions. So how many of you had any clue about all of this development that was going to be here in the future? Not very many. So that definitely shows how important this, this is to be here.
All right. If anybody has a comment card that you wrote while the mayor was talking, please just raise it up and Brandon or Stephanie will come by and collect it. We got some over here, guys. All right, I am just going to read, read to you all the, all the questions that have come in. Okay, the first one is, "What is the plan for fixing the Tradition Water Plant? It's always down and cannot handle the current amount of homes."
Are you talking about the irrigation system? Okay, so the city does not control the Tradition irrigation system? I don't know, Kevin, if you want to speak to that a little bit?
Can you? Yes, to the mayor's point, the Tradition irrigation is a, is a separate entity. I will tell you that the city has committed and we've extended a reclaim main. It's going in and out. A reclaim main from the north. Thank you. We have extended a reclaim main down from Glades Cut Off Road, which we are, have met with, with those involved with plans of otherwise further providing reclaimed as a source of, of water for irrigation. So we have an existing agreement with Tradition, CDD regarding that. And we are in conversation as Western Grove is, is considering a potential for similar irrigation. So again, reclaimed is water otherwise treated by the wastewater facility and otherwise is eligible to be used for irrigation purposes. Thank you.
Her question was, "Does the city have a role in approving the irrigation system or is it out of our jurisdiction?"
It's out of our jurisdiction. I'm just going to ask, if you have a question, just let's please make sure that we have it on a card so that we have, can keep them as a record. And also, we can keep going through the process.
All right, next question. "Will the rental units be hold or sell? Will Madamie own or sell to Wall Street? Are the new homes going to be Woodframe or CBS?"
Okay. So, listen, Madamie is a master developer. They have the ability to develop their entitled property for their own communities. Or they also have the ability to sell to a different developer, as we have seen with the multifamily that is going to be developed in the Slope Side community. Most recently, that came through with the Tradition MPUD amendment. So I understand that not everyone is a fan of Madamie. But I want to make sure that we're all being very fair in that they are the master developer of Tradition with those development rights and entitlements. And they are going to be here for a long time. So what's important from the city's standpoint is that we are making sure that we are working with all of our development partners in the community, because we have to do that. And so, we don't have control over whether they develop it as a Madamie community or they sell it, but they have the rights to do that. So, and listen, what, developers, of course, they're in the business of making money. But also, to be honest and fair, this entire area wasn't even part of the city. So if Tradition wasn't annexed into the city, no one in this room, well, except for maybe some of us out here, well, one, one lives in Tradition, one of us lives in Tradition on our city team, would be here right now. We wouldn't be in Port St. Lucie. It's because of the developers that came and developed that majority of us are here. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we're being fair as we're talking about, you know, the future development that's already entitled here in the entire area. And as far as the homes, the Florida Building Code allows stick-built homes. That's the Florida Building Code. And what happens is, the construction plans come in. Every single construction plan is reviewed by our building department. And they make the determination on whether those construction plans are acceptable for the homes that are going to be built. And so, I can't tell you whether all the homes coming in, in the future, are going to be concrete or stick-built, because I really just don't know that answer. And we won't know that answer until those plans come into the city. But again, stick-built is allowed under the Florida Building Code.
All right, next question. All right, next question. "Please, all right, please comment on unregulated growth in Tradition and Port St. Lucie."
So, I don't know how you want to explain unregulated growth, because it's not necessarily that it's regulated, but it's allowed, obviously, per the developments of regional impact and the entitlement rights that were granted back 20 years ago. So it's not growth that was unplanned, because clearly it was planned through the developments of regional impact and the master plan unit developments. But is it too fast for all of us? Sure, sure, it is. However, we can't change it, and we can't stop it. And it's not just us that is experiencing this. The several areas in the entire state of Florida are under the same, having the same issues that we are having as it relates to growth in being able to provide services. Fort Lauderdale, Cape Coral. I was just in Fort Myers this weekend, visiting my daughter in college. And I was there three months ago, visiting her in college. And what I have seen in the eight-mile area, just in the three-month timeframe, not to mention what I saw last August when I dropped her off at college, it is unbelievable, the amount of development that is going on in that area alone. Everyone's moving to Florida. I'm not going to get into all the reasons why. We all know all the different reasons why, or can speculate as to those reasons why. But the reality is, people are coming. And we have to do our best as a city organization, which we are working every single day very hard to make sure that we're doing our best to be able to provide the services for everyone now and the growth coming in. Same thing as it relates to our fire district. Like I mentioned, the plans are in the works, and they're being made to make sure that we're providing those services. And obviously, our school district is doing the exact same thing to deal with all the new families and kids that are going to need to be able to go to school.
How many new residents do you expect in Western PSL in the next three to six months?
I can't really tell you how many do I expect in three to six months. What I can tell you is, the state does every year. They look at the population, and they tell us, as of, in August, we usually find out. And every April, they have their number, but then we usually find out in August. So what the number is, the new population number is. So again, from '21 to '22, we saw 11,000. From '20 to '21, we saw 11,000. So in the last two years, 22,000 residents have come to the city to live. And so we have to make sure that we are doing our best to address that in every city service level or county service level we can.
Considering the incredible shortage of doctors and medical staff we are experiencing now, how do you plan to correct this problem with immediate effect?
So, short answer is, I can't, and I'm not. Because the city does not control the medical field. That is, that's all private. And we have no say in doctors or nurses getting hired whatsoever. That's all, has to do with the hospital groups and making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do to hire the necessary doctors, nurses, and medical staff that are needed. So I will share with you that I had a medical incident about a year ago. And yes, I spent 11 hours in the hallway of Tradition Medical Center. So I have personal knowledge of the fact that that's a reality here. However, I can't do anything to change that or make it better, because I don't have any say or control over it whatsoever. And I cannot, first of all, I can't stop and prevent and take away the development rights that have been granted. And I cannot use that as a reason to stop development that has been, rights and development that has been granted either. I just, that is not within the city's authority or purview to do so for that reason.
All this development and no infrastructure to support traffic, why aren't developers responsible for improving the roads?
So I just talked about that. And as you saw, the developers are responsible for the roads in this entire area. And there will be improvements, and there will be new roads added as a result as it relates to the rest of the city. If you've been driving around, you have seen that there is construction for the 95 interchange here. There's St. Lucie West. The bridge is being replaced to add capacity. Port St. Lucie Boulevard South actively in construction right now to add capacity. And the entire road from Gatlin all the way down to Becker Road will be four lanes. It's in stages and phases. Floresta, as you may know, if you go out east, Floresta is being addressed right now. Also, I want to mention that we have our half-cent sales tax projects that we've been working on. California is the next road that's going to be addressed. And then, right now, we are also in the planning, early planning stages of talking about what road is next that we have to address. And we're going to be addressing those roads through our mobility fee plan. And I'm not sure if anyone knows what mobility fees are. I'm going to make sure I go over it quickly. So there's impact fees. And I'll stick to, right now, impact fees for roads. And if you don't know what an impact fee is, impact fees are paid by the development community for impacts they make on our roadway network. Adding, and the fact that we're going to have to add more capacity over time in order to address the issues, address the impacts that they create by more people moving here. So recently, in the last two years, we switched from what we call impact fees to mobility fees. And the reason why we did that is because with impact fees for roads, you can only just build capacity. You don't have the flexibility to build sidewalks or turn lanes. And so, or roundabouts, for that matter. So doing the mobility fees gives us the flexibility to really hone in and make sure that we're addressing those issues as we see fit as a city. And so, in that mobility fee plan, once we adopted that, phase two of that plan was, okay, let's take a look at the roads in the city that we're going to have to address next. So some of our early conversations, we know that St. Lucie West Boulevard, we know we have to address that road. Right now, the bridge project is going on. Right after the bridge is done, the city and the county, on the county side, they'll be making improvements. On the city side, we'll be making improvements to the intersection, correct? The Peacock intersection. And like I said, we're in the very, very early planning stages of making sure that St. Lucie West is going to be the first road that gets addressed next. We have other roads that are going to need to be addressed as well. Torino Parkway, that's going to need to be addressed. South Bend is going to be, need to be addressed. So we will have a plan in place through this process that we do, depending on the amount of funding that we have coming in, and also leveraging all our resources for funding. And what that means is, working with the state, what you may not know is, there's a county board called the Transportation Planning Organization. It's made up of four members of the city council, four members of our county commission, and a school board representative as well. And we spend a lot of time planning for all the future roadways and issues that we have that need to be developed. We talk about pedestrian, sidewalks, we talk about roadway planning. And we have a 2045 plan for that. And how that works is, the state, we're in a district through the state, and every year, each district, through the TPOs or the Transportation Planning Organizations, we get a certain pot of money. And all of our projects are in a plan that is a multi-year process that starts from what's considered PDNE, which is a study to determine whether the road is needed or the project is needed. If that gets through, and that funding gets available for the study, that he gets done, and then we move forward to, for design. Then, in the year that it gets funded for design, after that's complete, the design's complete, it gets moved forward for any right-of-way acquisition that's necessary. And then it finally gets funded for construction. And so, as you probably know, these major road projects are not cheap. We're talking multi-millions of dollars in order to get these road projects done. And we only get a certain amount of money. So what we have to do is, we have to look at what that project is and leverage our resources. So is it, some of our roads are city money, combined with state money, combined with, you know, other grants that we may receive. Sometimes it's federal money, depending on what that road looks like. So we leverage all of our resources in order to plug in and put in place the plan for all our future development that we know that is going to have to happen as far as our infrastructure is concerned.
Okay, this is a repeat question, but I'm going to read it into the record. "With so many communities being built here, why don't we have enough doctors available to take care of everyone? It's already so hard to get a doctor's appointment."
So I answered that already.
Next one. "People moved here because PSL was known to control development. Now every inch of space in Tradition is under construction with multifamily units and is looking like a factory town, not a hometown. What happened and when will roads, et cetera, be built?"
So, as I mentioned, that's why we're here. I'm sure a lot of you did not realize that there's five DRIs in this area. They all have development rights that were granted many, many years ago. And those rights to develop are here today, and that's what we see happening. As far as infrastructure, we are addressing our infrastructure needs as best as we possibly can. And again, we know that the developers are responsible for this internal roadway network. I know it's probably a little bit frustrating for a lot of people, because maybe you didn't realize that when you moved into one of the communities here, obviously, you didn't know that this was all master-planned and has been for many, many years. And so I understand it's difficult, because if you've been here especially 10 or 20 years, you're saying to yourself, "Well, this isn't what I thought. This isn't, you know, I thought I moved into, you know, an area where there's a lot more green space or a lot more wildlife habitat." But the real reality is, you moved to Tradition that had all these development rights throughout the entire corridor, and you just really didn't know it. And it was planned, it was always planned to be this way. However, it was overall, we hoped it would be over a longer period of time. But it's been much more rapid as a result of everyone moving here.
Next question. "Any consideration to changing the light on Crosstown, and I think that says Interstate 95, to read 'right turn on red light'?"
I don't know.
All right. So the Crosstown 95, that is a DOT-controlled roadway. As of right now, we have not heard any, you know, changes to their traffic signal pattern. But I know we can reach out to them and discuss that with them, but they ultimately just... We can reach out to them and discuss that with FDOT, but that is ultimately an FDOT-controlled interchange and traffic signal. Right now, we have not heard of any indication from them that they're planning on changing that traffic signal timing at this time.
All right. "Fire and medical protection is deficient west of I-95. There are over 4,000 new homes and 9,000 residents with only one fire station to protect and tend to service needs. Can you expedite the fabrication of the new fire station on Village Parkway?"
So as I mentioned, the Village Parkway Fire Station will be done in 2025. And I don't know, Chief, if you want to expound on anything?
Yeah, for the past couple of years, we've been evaluating where we were in station construction. So as the mayor indicated, we have three stations coming out of the ground, probably more or less simultaneously. And I'll walk you through the areas, and I'll finish with the Dell Web one. The one that we're building at Milner last year, if that station was constructed, would have run about 1,400 calls. The closest station is five miles away. The corridor in the north end that we're looking at would run about 1,200 calls. Our station is at least six or seven miles away, and that station covers the turnpike all the way to the county line. So there are people waiting 40 minutes for services up there. If we built the Dell Web station last year, it would have ran between 600 and 700 calls. But we're also seeing the growth coming out here. So what we did was, we advanced that station construction project. Tomorrow is a fire board meeting. They'll be approving, hopefully, our architect review contracts. So we're moving forward with that. We already have a basic design down. The goal is, probably by the summer, we'll have a sign-up. A year ago, right now, it takes us about 24 months to get fire apparatus. It used to be a 12-to-18-month project. A year ago, we started purchasing that apparatus. So it should be arriving next summer in anticipation of that. The other thing is, meeting the staffing needs. In terms of, we talked about impact fees. When you bought your home, if you bought new, you paid then, it's about $675,000 per rooftop. It takes between 7,000 and 8,000 rooftops to pay for the construction of the station, all the equipment that goes into it. It takes about the same number of homes to pay for the staffing for that station. So we're at that tipping point now, 18 months to two years. That station will be up right there at the Dell Web community and serving down there. It's a, you know where Dell Web is? It's about a quarter mile north of there is where we have our two-acre site.
All right, the next question is a repeat, but I'll read it in. "How long before we get another firehouse?" We just answered that. "How long will the, or I'm sorry, how will the developer impact fees be applied to help Tradition's growth? How can Tradition residents be involved in decisions for the use of these funds?"
Okay, so how it works is, through our mobility fee, our mobility plan for roads, is that there are benefit districts. And please, Teresa or Mary, if there's anything technical that I need to say, please help me out with this. So the money that the developers have to pay for their impacts have to go into the benefit district of where the development is located. And so, once we, they pay into that, each, the funds are broken down by the different development districts. And so as we need more infrastructure in those certain benefit districts, we can, if we need another road, then we can utilize that funding for the benefit district that the project is in, or an adjacent benefit district. Is that the correct terminology, adjacent? Okay, so basically, one that touches the other. So as we move forward, like I said, and as we need to address these roads, we'll be able to look to those, that funding, and see where we need to, can use that money to address that infrastructure. Anything else that needs to be added there, that I'm missing?
I think, Mayor, the question of how they can get involved with impact fees. If we wanted to talk about, we have the Citizen Summit that we just did. That's an opportunity for members of the public, are always welcome to attend. That's actually a way to hear from you. And we use that information for our budgeting and our capital improvement program that's established every year. So that's a great opportunity, also just paying our attention to our agendas and our budgetary process. Those are also all open to the public, and there's always public comment.
Yes, so we have two regular meetings a month, which are on the second and fourth Monday of the month at 6:30 PM. We also have a special meeting that we have in the day on Monday mornings, on the third Monday of the month, at 9:30 in the morning. At those meetings, we get a little bit more in-depth where we kind of workshop items that need to be talked about a little bit more than what is on our regular business agenda. And of course, like was stated, all of our meetings are public. You can come and speak, public to be heard, or on any agenda item. Or if you have any questions or concerns, you can always call or email me. And in addition, I have a newsletter. I don't know if anyone here receives it. I have an e-newsletter I send out every single month. And I talk about all the different things that are going on in the city. And then I also ask for your input if there's certain topics that you would like me to speak about, and so I could put them in the following month's newsletter. This month- This month's newsletter, I put in information about impact fees. And like I said, every month, I'll have a topic. So there's lots of ways that you can get involved and ask questions, and we welcome that because public engagement is something that's very important to me and to our council. And everything we do, every project we have, has that public engagement component to it. And we use all of that information in order to make our city the best it can be. And we build it all into our strategic planning process as well.
All right. Next question. Considering that we pay extra taxes to live in Tradition, can we have a board of citizens/residents that have some say in the planning of home growth, businesses, et cetera?
Well, I know you pay more in assessments, but that's because you all have CDD's that you have to pay into. That's different from other areas in the city because there's not CDD's in some of the other, obviously, in the main part of the city where the lots are. But there's the CDD boards that control all of the CDD's, and I know they have all their different meetings, but I don't really know of any other, because, any other way because the development that's happening and is going to happen is entitled, and they have the rights to do so. So there's really no decision-making on the part of any citizens in terms of saying yes or no to that development because those development rights were already granted. It's a little, it's different in the sense that, it's not like it's a development that's coming in that doesn't have the rights already, and there's a lot more flexibility that we have in order to say yes or no to it. We, the council that you have now, and I've been on the council for 12 years, whether I like it or not, and I'm going to tell you, there's a lot of it that I'm not a fan of, but a lot of it, I don't have an option because, to say no, because this is what was given all those years ago.
With all the new additions of apartments, are the owners contributing toward the maintenance cost of Tradition's community, and if so, at what percent?
The owners of?
The owners of the apartments, buildings.
No, I mean, they pay impact fees when they, when the apartment complexes come in for development. But as far as any public roads are concerned, the maintenance is city responsibility to maintain the public roadways. The roads that the developer owns and have not turned over to the city, they are responsible for the maintenance of those roads. And when they do decide that they want to turn those roads over to the city, they have to meet a lot of different criteria, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Colt, in order to make sure the roads are a certain standard that we will accept as a city. And that is a pretty lengthy process, correct?
Absolutely.
Right? And I mean, they go over it with a fine-tooth comb and make sure that all DOT standards are met and city standards are met. So there's really no other maintenance that I'm aware of that, can you guys think of that they're required?
Okay. How can the traffic at the intersection of Crosstown and Village Parkway be improved?
So as the mayor mentioned, Crosstown is in the process of getting extended right now. So that intersection will be improved with the extension of Crosstown, as well as signal modification timings that are underway and will be put in place once the construction is complete.
All right. Next question. Is there any time when the city says enough is enough as to growth of homes with the influx of people and the roads becoming unable to handle traffic?
I wish I could. I really wish I could.
How can we get rid of, how can we get rid of the TIM automated buses not used enough and the nuisance on the streets?
The TIM buses aren't going anywhere. I'm sorry, but they're not. They're here to stay, and are they a little bit before their time for our city? Yes, I would say so, in all honesty. However, they are here, and, you know, we talk about this a lot when we have strategic planning, and we're talking about the future, and then we're talking about, you know, how some other cities are into the autonomous vehicles, getting into that realm. If you're familiar with Lake Nona area, with the BEEP system, which are, those are BEEP buses, we call them TIM here, they're widely used in that area. And I was just at the Florida Big City Mayor Coalition about two months ago with Mayor Dyer from Orlando, and after our meeting, he had to run out because they're really on the path of autonomous vehicles, and he was actually going to do ribbon cuttings for the autonomous vehicles that are really advancing in the Orlando area. So here, it's a little before our time, but in 10 years, I'm willing to bet that those TIM vehicles are going to be pretty heavily utilized.
Madam Mayor, some may not realize that there is a different path.
That's true.
That's going to be, that you may see on the side, so they're not going to be, in some sections, part of the same roadway. They're going to be separate. And I don't know if Colt can identify those street segments.
Yeah, so it's all along Village Parkway, all along Tobaca Road and across to Discovery. And then eventually, will we, will we have another, a separate or separate path around Community? Eventually, right. So eventually, yeah, around Community, there'll be a separate path for, for the TIM vehicles there, so they won't enter the roundabout and slow you all down. I know they're slow.
They are permitted.
They are permitted, yes. And also, it's the federal government that regulates their speed at this time? Is that correct? Yeah, so they regulate, the federal government regulates the speed. So even though we want them to go faster, I wish I could make them a little faster for you, but I can't do that.
All right. Cell service in Tradition, when can we expect it?
So how cell towers work, or cell service works, is the city doesn't install them or build them. The private developers of those cell towers and come into the city, and they request them. Out here, obviously, all the land is owned by the developers. I can tell you that I have had conversations with Madamy, who have indicated that they were in talks with one or two developer, cell tower developers. I have not received an update. I don't know if any of our team has received any updates on what that may look like, but I can ask Madamy for an update on that next time I speak with them. And I'll put it in my newsletter and let you all know. Or I'll put it on the Tradition Community Forum, because I know you all read the forum.
All right. Additional art venues, community theater, is there any zoning for these?
I'm not aware of, well, I'm not aware of any community theaters that have come to us looking for space that you're aware of. Yeah, I'm not aware that have, that have any that have come forward. As far as entertainment, like I said, Sogro will be the amphitheater facility in a few years, as far as the entertainment facility. Also, as far as entertainment, we do have MidFlorida, and we do do our River Nights, but I'm not aware of any actual community theaters that have come to us. But art, we do have a public art master plan that we work on and are implementing. I know there's an advisory member here tonight who's on our Public Art Advisory Board, and that is a work in progress as well. And that is something that has come out of our community surveys and our citizen summit is that we need to implement more public art in our community, and so we are making sure that we implement that as best we can.
Are we being proactive on future demands for water and sewer?
Well, I think I went over that already. We have plenty of capacity, and we do have plans 50 to 100 years out for our water supply. As far as, well, if that's irrigation, that's your irrigation, and that's controlled by Tradition's irrigation, right? So, and the, or the CDD's. So I think that they put out information, if I'm not mistaken, about restrictions on watering your lawn. I think I saw something recently that was posted somewhere about whatever the restrictions are. But that does, that's separate from your actual water supply, your drinking water and your sewer.
Can we make growth a little slower? Growth is good. Anything too much gives problems.
Again, I wish I could. If I could put a pause on all of this so that everyone on this panel and everyone, our community partners, could actually breathe and slow down and not run, you know, 100 miles an hour 24/7, pretty much, trying to get things done and plan for growth and address growth and implement all of our plans, I would absolutely do it, and I'm sure everyone up here would be very happy for it. But we don't have that ability.
How many zoning changes are planned? What are green spaces in Bedford Park zoned as?
How many planning and zoning changes are planned? I can't even tell you. I don't, a lot. You might need, you might, yeah, you might need that.
So for the zoning changes, we don't have a list of planned zoning changes. If a developer wants to come in and get approval within their entitlements, that's an MPUD revision, which we just went through, one with Tradition most recently, and that's the mechanism that they'll come forward and propose a change, and the people within 750 feet will get a notice for that. And that's your opportunity to attend a meeting and share your thoughts with the planning board and/or the city council. But we don't have a master list pending beyond our agendas or our, you could certainly always contact staff if you have an area you're interested in. You're welcome to call us and check in, and we'll let you know if something comes in.
They're, they have applications coming in every single day, or calls coming in every single day, and it's, it's, it's nonstop. But it's important to note that we are required by law, and correct me if I'm wrong, any application that comes in has to go through our planning review process. We can't say no, don't, don't bring it, you can't do it. It has to go through the process, and it has to be reviewed by our planning zoning department. They provide a recommendation, and they review everything for concurrency. And then they provide a recommendation to the planning and zoning board. And then the planning and zoning board makes a decision, and that decision is a recommendation to the city council. So there's, it's several-step review process. And then there's also our site plan review committee as well that looks at all the site plans. And the site plan review committee is made up of city staff, a planning and zoning board member, the fire district. And so several people take a look at all those plans and the sites and make determinations on whether those site plans can be approved or not. And then depending on the size of the site plan, because we have different criteria, the major ones definitely all come through to city council for review and approval.
I have two about golf carts. I'm going to read them together, even though they're two different questions. What are the regulations for golf carts, low-speed vehicles on the road, sidewalks, et cetera? And then the second one is, what is the plan for golf cart usage? Plans to extend golf cart paths along Village towards Crosstown Parkway?
Okay. So we all know that golf carts and low-speed vehicles are different, right? So low-speed vehicles are registered with the state, you need to have insurance, and they have to have all the safety mechanisms on them possible. And Chief, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think, what, 35 miles an hour, right? As far as the low speed? Right. Under 35 miles or less, low-speed vehicles. Golf carts are not supposed to be on the public roadway. As far as moving forward with, was it Crosstown, Village to Cros, I mean, Tradition to Crosstown? What was the question? Village to Crosstown on the actual road? There's no plans for golf carts to be allowed on Village Parkway. That is, that's our main road. And again, if you want a low-speed vehicle, then it has to be on a roadway that's 35 mile an hour or less.
How much more development can the city handle? The roads are already way too crowded.
I think we've pretty much answered that already, and we have many plans for future infrastructure.
When is Crosstown Parkway to be completed to the west?
Okay. Again, that's 2025.
Utilities info. How do I get notified? Sometimes I get the info and sometimes I don't. Boil water restriction.
Okay, so I'll let Kevin talk about all that, about boil water notices and, and how that works.
Thank you. So notifications, we, most recently, of course, had some impacts with some, some major line breaks, we'll acknowledge. Certainly, it's our utmost concern and importance to get that information out to our residents and to our customers. We utilize a variety of platforms, including the website. If you have an email sign-up on your account, we have an opt-in. There's some ability for opt-in text messaging. We utilize, depending on the severity or the, how large the event, you know, through social media and through the news agencies. If for some reason you're getting them or not getting them, certainly, I'd be interested whoever submitted that would like to get your information and confirm. We also do have a list for those that may medically be dependent upon notifications. We have something similarly that we can map out and make sure that those would get personal calls, which, again, the most recent one we had due to a large diameter pipe and a break, it was, it was very extensive. So again, we utilize every tool that we have in our, in our tool, in our tool bag. And after action, we try to look to see how we can further approve upon those responses and making sure, again, how to prevent them. But if I could get your information afterwards and...
My question was, I got the first boil notice a while back, but the latest boil notice I didn't get.
I could, I could answer that too. So the, the robo-call, are you talking about the robo-call?
I didn't get any notification except for my HOA.
So we...
The first one around looked great, but I'm really happy, I think you guys do it at first, so I just don't know why I didn't get the second, and what do we need to do?
So the robo-calls are, are every call and every phone number that we have that you have signed up for with your utilities account, in Tradition, got a, got a robo-call. So if, let's talk to you afterwards and make sure that you, but it's the phone number that was you used to sign up with your account. So if it's an old number, but there's other ways you can make sure you get the, by opting in. And if you go to cityofpsl.com文 text, you can put in your text number. There's a pull-up banner in the back there, there's a QR code on it, you can scan it. Those people, everyone on that list gets it on top of the robo-call numbers. So if you want to ensure, ensure, make sure you get it, opt-in for our texts, and you can opt-in for our emails also. Everyone on the email list got that notification also. But we do heavily rely on Tradition, or HOAs, to help us spread the message. So I'm glad you received it that way, so that's one of our backup methods. But that is, that's, those are the methods we use right now. I would highly, strongly suggest signing up for the texts.
And of course, we use all our social media platforms as well. And recently, we were able to start posting on the Tradition Community Forum page. We were allowed that access, so that was really important. So we have been putting stuff out there as well, and we'll continue to do so.
Yeah. And if your emails go to spam, a lot of them do, just make sure that your spam filters are filtered for anything coming from City of PSL, Port St. Lucie, that's who it'll come from, the city of Port St. Lucie. All right. Our next question is, do we know what will be in the Stars and Stripes Park?
So it's supposed to be more of a passive recreation-type park. There are going to be some sculpture elements that are really related to patriotism. And also, going forward in the future, the city has designated that park since it's being designed that way as a more passive park for people to enjoy. It's also going to be our first responders park as well. So... So we've designated it for more patriotism and first responders. Because we have our beautiful Veterans Memorial Park out on the east side. So that's how we're going to move forward with that park. But it will be passive.
Are we going to have parking at the parks? Amphitheater, Heart, Stars and Stripes, and enough parking?
There'll still be parking at the amphitheater. I don't, is there parking at Heart in the park? Because it's just, there's a, shared parking, right? With the shops, right? At the shops at the Heart, which could be directly behind that, there'll be shared parking there. So there will be parking spaces available.
All right, the next question says, rotaries, conversion to intersections in Tradition? I think they're asking if the roundabouts will be converted to intersections in Tradition? And then stop signs, lights at Community Boulevard, question mark?
I don't know of any conversions.
All right, so with the Tradition Roundabout at Community and Tradition, that is required to be monitored every couple of years. And the developer, Madamie Holmes, provides a monitoring report. And if it ever shows that that roundabout is going to fail, they will have to convert it over to a traffic signal. But what we have found is a lot of traffic roundabouts do provide continuous traffic movement and help keep them moving. And they can also provide a traffic calming measure if they're put in the right places to slow vehicles down from, you know, making a long roadway into runway.
And then what was about the stop, stop signs?
Stop signs, lights, Community Boulevard, question mark? I'm not sure.
Is the person here who asked that question can clarify?
There's no name.
I'm not sure what that means. Okay, go on.
All right, the next one, this is also difficult. Planning-housing, how approved? 55 plus, no school, all ages school? There's no name on here, so I'm not sure. I'm not sure what that question is. And then the one after that says pace of development slower? Greater number of groceries, greater number of doctors? I think they're asking if we can slow development.
Yeah, no, can't, can't do that. As far as groceries, stores and retail establishments go. So in order to get commercial or retail, you need the residential. So commercial is, or retail's always going to follow residential because when these businesses and these companies look to come and they do their site selection process, they look at demographics, they look at income, they look at disposable income, and they all have to reach a certain level to meet their criteria in order to establish their business here in Port St. Lucie or anywhere for that matter. So as we continue to see more residential develop, we are now seeing more commercial come out. And that is why, for example, you see in front of the hotel, the new Hilton Hotel, you see the retail establishments being developed there. We have Fresh Market going in in that, in that space over there. Then shops at the Heart, you're going to see an Aldi, Aldi's store. And then there's going to be, I know at least one Kyle G restaurant. And there'll be some other retail there. As you continue down, as I showed on all the maps, each DRI has a certain amount of commercial development. And as, again, more homes get built, that'll get built out all the way down to Becker Road. The commercial space that the city owns on the corner of Village and Becker, I know there's a lot of questions about that because the city owns that. And Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's going out for a request for qualifications for developers coming in and develop that commercial space. And then once those qualifications come in and that's reviewed by city staff, then we'll go out for a request for proposals. And then they'll have to fight it out. And whoever comes up with the best proposal and the best development for that entrance gateway to our city, we'll work on getting that piece done. There has been interest, obviously, by our commercial, our national grocers in specifically for that parcel, that parcel in that area. But that land is worth a certain amount of money. And that land is your land as the taxpayers. And it's our responsibility to make sure that we get the most we can possibly for paying for that site.
All right. Can the city adopt a policy for golf cart crossing from private property to private property safe crossings?
So the golf cart issue has been a challenge for us to work on. We've talked about it a few times, but we aren't there yet really on a policy. We're very concerned about liability issues in the city. And so I'm not, at this time, there's nothing set in stone as for, as to where we're going to come forward with a policy. We do make sure that the, in the development communities, since a lot of them are golf cart communities, the public rights of way adjacent to them or attached to them, we have multimodal paths now that are at least eight feet, correct? That can accommodate a golf cart. But as far as letting golf carts go on our roads, we have no policy for that at this time. Is it, was your question, sir?
Yes, just a quick question. I just noticed that you allow golf carts to cross the city roadway from your first line holes at the Saints to the second line holes in the back with a safe marking across it. So what I'm asking is, if somebody wants to drive from a private roadway here to Target and cross at the stoplight, not driving the Village Parkway, they just want to go from here, ride a property, to ride a property, and they cross and they crosswalk safely, or cross at the stoplight safely, but not driving on any of the road. That's what I'm asking, if there's a safe crossway, like, you know, a niche type, like safe park-to-crossways where people cross, you know, maybe E-bike, you know, a golf cart, something like that, just, just a thought.
We don't have any policies in place for that right now. Right.
Safely cross those 35 mile...
Yeah, like I said, we don't have that right now, potentially in the future as we continue to hash things out and figure out liability issues and safety issues.
So there's no more liability because a golf cart is measuring and walking?
I understand, but there are a lot of different issues there. Yeah.
All right, next question. Can we get a real post office in Tradition?
Well, that's up to the postmaster. And to be honest with you, he, they rarely return city phone calls. So I'm sure if you've called, you've had a hard time, but we have a hard time getting through as well. And that's really for them, the postal service, to determine.
All right, are there any plans for another cable company?
Are you saying other than Blue Stream? Not that I am aware of. I don't, I'm not aware, I don't know if anyone else is aware of, they're, they're changing, the master developer changing from Blue Stream. I know that there's an agreement that's in place for, I don't know how many years. And then they have the ability to opt, you know, to opt to renew it or not. But we don't really have any control over that since that agreement is between them and the master developer.
All right, next one. Can the, can the city purchase the area for sale by over, by our Tradition Lake for dedicated parking? Bridget thinks it's the Corral?
Oh. Oh. For the Tim, where the Tim vehicles are housed? Oh, so, so Madamie owns, owns that, right? And they have development rights for that. I have no idea what that land would be worth. But I also know that the city is not in the position right now to be buying land, especially at the high cost of land. So there is no, no plan for the city to buy any land from Tradition.
Has the Tradition tract through Del Webb been resolved?
Yes. It has. That was a work in progress for many months, but we finally got there with an agreement between Madamie and Polte and the Del Webb community.
Roads, isn't it cheaper to build out all four lanes at once rather than two lanes now and two lanes later?
Well, that's a quantity scale, so yes, if you build more at one time, it is going to be cheaper per unit price. But with the two lane network, that is where a lot of the bulk of the costs come because you put in all the infrastructure needed for the ultimate build out at that time. So then when they come in and widen to four lanes, six lanes, et cetera, that will be cheaper at that time than the first initial build.
Thank you.
All right, we have a question about homelessness and if we have a plan for homelessness in Tradition.
Okay, so recently, in the last year, the county has developed a homelessness task force and asked the city to be a part of it. Councilwoman Bana is a member of that task force. And so they are working on plans jointly between the city and the county and Fort Pierce to come up with ways to address homelessness. As you can imagine, that is a multifaceted issue because you have people that are, become homeless unfortunately because they're down on their luck for various reasons, losing jobs, medical issues. But then you also have the segment of the community that have a lot of mental health issues. And that just delves into a whole nother mixed bag of problems that we have to, we'd have to work on to resolve. So like I said, there is a Treasure Coast Homelessness Council, I believe. Is that correct, Chief? Yeah, and so they're, they also work on issues to address homelessness. And so this is, like I said, a newer board. And so once they have some plans and some outcomes, we'll be able to share that information. But as a city relating to building any type of shelters, there are no plans for that at this time.
When does the code enforcement visit Southwest neighborhoods to see about the upkeep of homes there?
Well...
Southwest neighborhood? I'm not sure. There's no name.
Okay, so we have our code compliance division. And Carmen, I see you back there. Yeah, you want to come up and address how code works? Since you are the director? You can provide more detail than I can.
Okay, yeah, whoever asked that question, I'd be happy to speak with you after. But primarily code enforcement, what we do involves, we do some patrols out here. We look for graffiti, illegal signs. There are a lot of gated communities out here. A lot of HOAs don't really want code enforcement in there because it's not really needed. So anything we do out here would kind of be on a, on a, on a request basis other than patrolling for the signs and the graffiti. Most of our resources are spent in the general development area of the city because there are no HOAs upholding the standards of living there. But I'll be in the back, happy to talk in greater detail or get your information, whoever wanted that answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who, what jurisdiction approved the developers to build in Tradition?
Port St. Lucie City Council back in 2003 and '04.
Has the future planning made provisions for recession in 2024? What happens when the building stops as in 2008?
So we look at trends every year. I'll give you a little description about how the city operates in terms of looking at our revenues and expenditures. So every year, we pass a city budget. We're required by state statute to have a balanced budget. And so how our process begins is, well, and obviously, our city manager and the team, they're constantly working on their budget nonstop on a daily basis. All our department directors, who are in charge of their department's budgets. But on, in February, the city council meets with our city team. And we have a workshop, and it's usually a two or three day workshop. And the city manager presents to us what's going on budget-wise within the city. We look at all of our revenues and we look at our expenditures. We looked at, we look at how things are trending. And then we also look to our, what the property values are and what's going on. Obviously, we pay attention to what's going on in the marketplace, whether we're booming or we're having a lull. Like right now, we're having a low. And so we pay attention very closely to all that. And then right after that, we start providing some direction as it relates to our tax rate or our mileage rate. And we move forward with going, the city manager moves forward with going into his budget process with all of his departments. And then in June, at the end of June, the city manager will present to us his proposed budget. And at that time, we get preliminary numbers from the property appraiser's office to tell us what, how much money we know that we'll be having coming in, which is our, majority of our revenue. And then, so we'll have that number from the property appraiser that gets built into the budget. But every year, the city manager and our finance team, they estimate what we think that the next year is going to look like through that budgeting process. Then in July, we get the final certification numbers from the property appraiser. And then we go into our July city council workshop. That's another three day workshop where that full budget is presented and we review our revenues and expenditures again. We look at the, what the projects that we need to do that are coming up. We look at the staffing that has been requested by our city manager. And that's how we build the budget and approve the budget going forward into next year. So throughout the entire year, we are constantly looking at these trend lines. We're constantly looking at what we expect as far, in far, as far as revenue in terms of increase in property values or increases in the construction industry. And so there's always a balance to that every single year. And so we, we look, do it every year, but we also look to the future. We're also presented with a long-range plan that really gives us a five-year look at our revenues and to see where we're landing based on those projections. So it's, it's really, there's a short-term look and a long-term look as well in order to make sure that we're providing the services that we need to provide and keep up that level of service to all of you. And, and at some point, hopefully, yeah, we will get to that point where we can level out. And I don't, I look forward to that day, that's all I'll say. I don't know when that will be, but I think we all look forward to that day because it's, it's, it's a lot. This growth, this definitely is a lot to handle.
All right. Have all the companies building in the jobs quarter received tax breaks? What happens when the companies like Amazon back out?
So yes, they, they are receiving tax incentives. The tax incentives that the, our economic development community receives. Have our voter-approved incentives. They were approved last December in the 2020, was it special election 2021 or was it '22? I can't remember which one it was in.
2021.
That's, okay, 2021. So it was, it's 10 years, it's good for 10 years. And the voters are the ones that give us the ability to provide that tax abatement. Years and years ago, the tax abatement pretty much was given for 10 years straight. When I got on council and going forward, we determined that we wanted to make sure our economic development partners had a little bit more skin in the game. So what we've agreed to is five years tax abatement. And that's just for city and county taxes, by the way. Our county partners, partner with us on this economic development. And they have to be targeted industries that can also get approval from the state. They're required to, I'll go back to the sliding scale. Five years, we do five years tax abatement. And then after that, we do it on a sliding scale for the next five years of 20% each year up to the 100%. They're required to provide a certain number of jobs. And if they don't provide those jobs, then they don't get the tax abatement going forward. And we can take, take that tax abatement right away from them. They do pay other taxes, though. They pay into schools, they pay into the fire district. So it's not that they get all their taxes, it's just this actual city and county general revenue taxes that they get. And so, but we do pay attention to make sure that they are performing the way they're supposed to perform. Amazon did not get any tax incentive, by the way. Chaney Brothers received a tax incentive. FedEx received a tax incentive, but Amazon did not ask for any and they didn't get any. But again, these are targeted industries. But again, these are targeted industries having to do with like manufacturing and the logistics and distribution. And again, it goes through that state process as well.
When do the original bonds mature? When will they be removed from our non-advalorem tax bill? Not sure.
Bonds?
It says original bonds.
City bonds are not on your non-advalorem tax bill. So what's on your non-advalorem tax bill is your CDDs, which the city does not control. So as far as any CDD bonds, I can't tell you when they expire because I just don't really know. Your, the CDD should be able to provide, board should be able to provide you the information, but maybe you already have it. Some of you may already have it. As far as the city is concerned, it's a stormwater fee and your garbage fee that is on the non-advalorem portion of your tax bill.
Is the Tradition Southern Grove/Western Grove expansion the reason for being able to reduce the tax millage rate?
It's, it's not one singular thing. Again, when we are looking at our revenues and expenditures and, and the budget is being planned for. Again, in February, we start, take a look at the trend lines. And then we set a goal for being able to reduce the millage rate as much as we possibly can in order to provide those services. So it's, it's not one singular thing. We look at everything together as a whole and when we are able to make that determination. And, and then we make that final determination, well, mostly final determination in July. And then the public hearings for our budget are in September. And we have first and second reading at our first and second meetings of the month in September because the budget has to be passed by October first for the following year.
Why so many apartment buildings being built here?
Well, a couple of reasons. One, they're allowed. And two, because our city is eighty-four percent single family homes. And they're, the market now is, is shifting to multifamily rentals. And we do need rentals. We need all different types of homes in, in our city. We have some of the highest single family home ownership in the entire nation. I don't know of any other city that has more homeownership than eighty-four percent than Port St. Lucie. So we want to, need to make sure that we have different types of home choices available. And like I said, they're entitled here, especially in this area.
With all the boil water that's going on, are you fining the developers every time they break a large main line?
I believe so. To that, or Kevin, you want to speak to that?
Yes, thank you. So in the cause of damage to our infrastructure, we, of course, the city does go after the responsible parties. So two occurrences have, have happened in, in the recent past. One was a twenty-four inch main that, that was actually a live tap. So that main was live and there was a contractor tapping into, to basically have another main come off of it. There was a situation there as they were drilling through, it actually cracked the pipe. And because of the large diameter of these water mains, when you have a leak, it's not like a leak at your faucet, you know, it's, it's large quantities of water. So in that case, yes, we certainly are looking to recover any expenses associated with that particular situation. But recognize, you know, we look to see how we can learn from that. What can we do when those type of mains taps are being done in the future? Can we have more personnel on site to be able to valve off if something like that happens in the future? So we isolate that, that, that break quicker. The most recent main interruption or leak, that one quite frankly was not caused by any construction. There was no construction going on in that particular area. We are still looking into it. We've, we've since we made the repair, replaced that, that pipe. We found that it did crack and we are sending it away to specialists to really look what's going on. The main wasn't that old. Again, that main was thirty inch in diameter. So as you can imagine, when you have a situation such as, as that, you know, we certainly want to find out why, what, what caused it was, you know, manufacturer defect, was insulation. But I'll tell you, and if there's any developers in the room, we have the, one of the most stringent guidelines as far as our standards and inspection and review processes, all this infrastructure is being put in the ground. Because at the end of the day, the infrastructure is taken over by the city and it's, it's ours to maintain and be responsible for. So we absolutely want to make sure that this infrastructure is meeting our specs and standards because that's, that's all of, you know, the property of the citizens and our customers. So yes, we do go after responsible parties for breaks that, that we find. This most recent one again was, was something that we are looking into, but there was, there was no specific reason. And that one happened in, you know, early morning. So, you know, there wasn't a construction crew out and such, but thank you.
Why are they planning to put a hundred, a one hundred and fifty foot cell tower at the corner of Village Parkway and Marshall instead of the big box corridor?
I'm not aware of them putting a cell tower at that location. Has anything come in that we're aware of from P and Z? I'm not aware, we're not aware of that. They can, any developer, any developer can come in with a proposal again and it will be reviewed. But we have requirements with regard to cell towers. And that all has to be met, all those requirements have to be met as it goes through the planning and zoning process.
What will the trails look like? Will they be paved or dirt roads? How will they intersect with major roads?
The trails that are planned in Tradition are, are going to be paved. And also it's important to note that it has to be ADA, you have to meet ADA requirements. As far as them intersecting with the roads, I'm not sure of every section. I don't know if you have any detail for that, but I think they're, the paths are a little bit separate. Aren't they separate? And I don't know where the crossings are. There is any specific?
All right, so the crossings right now, we are planning them at future intersections or at current intersections such as the roundabout at Tradition Community. So there will be a separate path for them to get off of the actual roadway there and then cross. And there is going to actually be flashing lights. So the TIM vehicle, for example, it will notify the signals that are there and will actually stop the cars. That way the TIM vehicle can safely go across. As far as connections to intersections, you know, where possible and wherever we can, we are going to tie them into existing sidewalks and try and look forward to keep, keeping those connections going so that we have continuous mobility.
What will be done to improve water quality in PSL?
All right, hello again. So we are in the midst of a few different things. So one of our water treatment facilities, James E. Anderson Water Treatment Plant Reverse Osmosis Plant, we are in the midst of actually replacing those elements, those membranes that make up that treatment process. We are also pilot testing a new technology for filter at the Lime Softening Plant, which has the capability of improving water quality, including some capabilities of potentially removing PFAS and PFAS. So that along with McCarty Ranch Preserve and Extension, I think was a, a, a very, very well planned out. And council and management at the time acquired those properties at a great time to buy land frankly and really set in motion the, the future plan for water quality, not only to the region, the ability to take water out of the C twenty-three canal currently to farm that. And, and you know, that eventually, that water will be taken and can be stored and otherwise be utilized for future drinking water through ASR wells or aquifer storage and recovery wells. Through a future surface water treatment plant, again, to the mayor's point, planning fifty year, fifty, a hundred years out. That, that next plan is planned currently for 2040. So we are constantly looking at emerging technologies as, you know, we get development and, and looking how we, we always can improve our, our drinking water.
How many variances have you given Madam E? How many more are you planning and why?
Variances? Do, I don't know about variances. We have amendments that come into MPUDs. I can't tell you how many more will be given because they have to come in. And if there are amendments to be done, they have to go through the process. Each MPUD has had several amendments done to it over the course of the last twenty years, especially it was, it relates to Madam E and their former master developer. I don't know if you had anything more to add?
You're exactly right. So we wouldn't give variances to Madam E or any of our other DRIs. Particularly what they do is they modify their MPUD. These development of regional impacts were approved twenty years ago. So it's not uncommon for revisions or modifications to be needed because plans change over time, conditions change. And so you're correct. That's how we handle them with a revision.
With all the building going on out on, there doesn't seem to be enough shopping centers. What are planned for the future?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, the more, more residential, more commercial retail we'll have in this entire area, all the way down to Becker Road.
Could ART, and I believe they're talking about the transit system, connect with Bright Line in West Palm and hopefully Fort Pierce in the future?
So as far as Port St. Lucie and Bright Line is concerned, we don't have an area where they will be stopping. As far as future stops are concerned, it's either going to be in Fort Pierce or in Stewart. And of course, Fort Pierce being our, right, our neighbor and in our own county, we would love to have the station in the future be in Fort Pierce. We've talked about it several times, not only on council, but and through our transportation planning organization. We've sent a letter in support of Fort Pierce. So hopefully Fort Pierce will get that station. As far as connectivity to Bright Line in the future, as far as transportation is concerned, I know that ART is, which is area regional transit through our county, they are working on their transit plans right now and also working on the next phase of next five to ten years. We had, I had a meeting with them most recently and they also came to transportation planning most recently to talk about those things. What we are working on now, especially since Bright Line's not here yet either way, so that's going to be years out. What we are working on now and is starting to become in place is since we have the park and ride facility on Gatlin near the Home Depot. That was a project through Transportation Planning Organization with the state. Palm Tran is looking to now begin service between Port St. Lucie and West Palm Beach. So that is going to be starting very soon. So you'll be able to, if you want to, go down to West Palm Beach. And then you can hop on the Bright Line down there if you want to, to go down to Miami. But as far as future goes, as Bright Line comes, more transportation planning will be done for that.
I didn't see, I did not see a firehouse presented or planned with a ladder truck. Will one be added?
I knew this question was coming up and that's another reason why Chief Sparrow is here. So Chief.
Right now, our aerial service comes from Station Ten on Dalton Circle. It's four point six miles away. When you're, when we started building this out and taking a look at, you see a lot of the stick built, four story homes or apartments are going up. Those are all fire protected buildings. So the first fire engine that gets there, their first responsibility is to tie into the standpipe and start feeding the building. It has an onboard fire pump, but our first job is to make sure the pump's working and keep flowing into it. So if our first arriving unit is an aerial unit, it's going to be committed to doing that and not aerial work. So strategically, it's actually better that they're the second or third due unit coming in. As these stations come up, we're constantly reevaluating all of our services, including aerial service. So we just had an evaluation from something called the Insurance Service Office. And they do a rating system for us. We're, we're actually anticipating an improvement in our rating right now under the current conditions. In about three to five years, they'll be back again. And during that time, we'll be evaluating our aerial response, how long it takes them to get there. Because we have up to eight and a half minutes to, to bring that truck on scene. So those are in constant evaluation. Right now, the way it's situated, we're good with it. Like I said, those four story fire protected buildings, they're going to contain it. Engine seventeen is going to go and feed that building and ladder ten will be up here behind them if we need to do any rescue work.
Right, next question, kind of general. What is currently happening with building permits, homes under contract, sales? Is the future growth rate increasing or decreasing?
Well, that's a, that's, that's a lot, that's. So as far as building permits, when they come in, they, they get evaluated. And obviously they get, they get permitted if the building, the construction plans meet all the criteria. We have seen a lull. It's, it's some reduction in the amount of building permits that, because of the inflation that's going on. And of course, because of the higher interest rates. Do we expect that to continue this year? Pretty much, we'll see, continue to see that. But we had an economist come in at our February workshop, I believe. And we have an economist come in to talk about the city and the region every single year. And we expect things to go back up come 2025 based on what was presented to us. So, and, and I mean, we have, the development rights are here, the land is here. We know what's happening with everyone moving, so we expect that to continue to happen.
All right, I have two about the same topics and I'm going to read them both. Are there any plans for an aquatic center facility in PSL? We need a facility for swim dive, water polo and synchronized artistic swimming, as well as high school swim teams currently have to travel to Martin County for those activities. And the second one is, why isn't an aquatic facility being built? Martin County has multiple pools for competition.
So as far as an aquatic facility is concerned, we're looking at that potentially for our Torino Regional Park. And so that's in process right now, as a matter of fact. We're in the planning process to see how we're going to develop that park. So we're looking, again, we're looking at that for a swimming pool or an aquatic facility. And, but no water parks because they're too costly and they're way too costly to maintain.
All right. Building and permitting knows what's being approved. Why is the city not being more proactive in making sure roads and infrastructure are ready ahead or on time instead of after as issues arise? St. Lucie West should have started years earlier. And then there's another, we can answer that one. There's another question then.
So we are always going to be playing catch up and retrofitting our city. And the reason why is because, especially with the original city, we were not planned with the adequate infrastructure. So that is why we have all the plans now. And we're never going to really get ahead because, one, you have to do studies, especially if you're getting money from the state and going through our planning process through transportation planning. All this, it takes a long time to plan and develop. Designs for roads take years. I mean, it's not, you just don't go in and slap some asphalt in and that's your road. You have to take in drainage and all kinds of engineering and all the things that go, are involved with that. And those designs take a long time. And money, these road projects are so, so expensive. And there is no way we'll ever have enough money at one period of time to, to address all the infrastructure that's needed in the city. I'll give you a perfect example of what we're dealing with with Floresta. So Floresta is three phases. The first phase is complete. We wanted to do phase two and two, two and three together. That was the plan. And that estimated cost was twenty-six million dollars for both. Well, things have changed. Everything's changed with the economy. We know what's going on. So when we went out to bid for that, those next phases, we're looking at twenty-six million dollars for each phase. So we don't have fifty-two million dollars sitting around to do that. So we have to make sure that we, we split it up and we'll get to it. Obviously, we're, it's all planned for, it's, it's designed, but we have to make sure that we have the funds to pay for it. And the reality is, all the revenue, tax revenue that we get doesn't pay for it. So it has to be multi-resources and multi-year process.
Are more burns expected to impact our air quality? I think they're talking about the mulch fire.
Oh, I don't expect anymore. That was. That was definitely something that was unexpected and one of those misnomers. I know that the company that was, had that property and that was renting it out from Colter and they're no longer there, obviously, they were looking to get other property in the county. I don't know if they were successful or not. They went before the county commission. But I don't know if they were successful in putting that business as their... Chief, I don't know if you followed whether...
They're functioning, but now they're not. The rules that were broken on that, they're now compliant.
Okay. So, apparently, the, whatever rules they were broken from the property where they had the mulch fire, they're in compliance with the other property that they're running in the county. So, we don't, we don't anticipate or plan for that to happen again. However, obviously, if it does, we'll have to address it from a city standpoint and obviously, the fire district standpoint.
Are all homes inspected before certificates of occupancy are granted? And how do you handle such volume?
The building department has several inspectors and every, every step in the process that requires an inspection, the contractor is responsible for setting up those inspections, whether it be for electrical or plumbing. Also, they have to obviously apply for their CO and then that gets inspected again. So, there's several levels that our building department goes out and does on a regular basis. I mean, thousands and thousands. We have data on how many permits are pulled every year and if anyone wants that, I can send that to you.
Is this growth of the city going to be reflected in the reduction of the taxes? Or on the contrary, are we going to see an increase of the taxes that are already affecting our families?
That's a great question. Growth never pays for itself. Never, ever, ever does it pay for itself. So, but I can tell you, your tax rate is not going to be increased this year. We have reduced our tax rate every year for the last seven years and plan to do very incrementally again this year as it relates to going forward in the next years. I can't tell you, all I can tell you is that the council and I are committed to do everything we can to keep the tax rate as low as we possibly can. But I can't promise you that's going to continue to happen year after year because we have to look every year at what's, what's happening and we have to evaluate what we need in order to provide the services for all of you in the city. But our goal is to lower it as much as we can or keep it as low as we possibly can. And I just want to also say, because this is really important as it relates to taxes. And I get this question non-stop. So, since there's so many of you here, I want to address it. Your overall tax bill that you get has about 19 different taxing authorities on that bill. The city is responsible on your ad valorem portion of the bill. Two line items, City of Port St. Lucie and City of Port St. Lucie voted debt. The voted debt is for Crosstown Parkway. That is all we are responsible for, collecting and imposing that tax rate. All the other taxes that you pay do not come to the city. They go to all the other taxing authorities that are listed on that bill. So, there's a lot of talk about, oh, we're the highest, Port St. Lucie is the highest in the state. That is completely incorrect. We do a benchmarking study against the top 20 cities every single year and we even include Stewart and Fort Pierce. And we are the fourth lowest municipality in the entire state as far as our mileage rate, our tax rate is concerned. Overall, are, on the entire tax bill, are our county overall tax bills higher? The rate is higher? It's one of the highest in the state? Yes, it is. However, as it relates to Port St. Lucie, we are the fourth lowest. Just want to make sure everyone understands that because there's always this question. That's for the state to decide. And actually, they tried doing that last session and if the vote, it failed. So... Well, you are capped at 3% and if anyone wants to, because I do this all the time. If anyone wants to review with me their, their tax bill and we look at what you've paid to the city or the poorest in the last five years, be happy to do that. I do that pretty much on a weekly basis for someone because our tax bill is very difficult to understand. And I completely acknowledge it. So, but I like to go over that information to show what you've paid over the course of a few years.
All right. This is a lengthy one. We understand builders need to make their money, but there, but is there a way the city approves consistency since the developer, development done in Tradition Parkway by the first roundabout on one side of Town Park where all those little crowded houses were built simply doesn't match? What happened and how did that get approved?
Okay, I've answered this question probably 100 times in the last few years. So, the boardwalk development, which nobody likes and I agree 100%, do not like it. At the time, I don't like how it turned out. At the time when it came through for approval, it met all of the necessary criteria. And also, at that time, we didn't have very many multifamily units at all. So, it was a new concept. It was a newer idea. Did it turn out how I like personally? No. Did it meet all the design standards for Tradition in the city? Yes. Am I really careful going forward about when I look at future development, what that's going to look like? I can honestly tell you yes. If there was a decision that I had to make and going back in time and say that I could do it all over again, would I change that? Yes. But with everything that we had at the time and all the information, it was approved and it did meet all the criteria for that approval. And also, I did also ask the developer to try to address how it looked from the outside. So, they did put in the berm, put some more landscaping. When it grows in, I think it'll look better. And, but that's the best that I can do.
What will be done to hold corporations that pollute our land, water and air accountable? And what will you do to help keep Port St. Lucie safe?
Is the person here who asked that question? Yes. Can you, can you clarify a little bit? Pollution as far as what's concerned?
Speaking about the fact that there's a lot of roads that are going to be made in place, noise pollution, pollution litter, any kind of pollution that might come from all these structures that's made. And then also, time, because there's a lot of people, lots of activity, lots of people...
Sure. So, our number one strategic goal is to be a safe, clean and beautiful city. It is top priority and we work really hard at making sure that we are addressing that. If there are businesses or companies that are littering or contributing to, you know, putting garbage out there or not following our codes, our code enforcement team absolutely addresses that. Our teams also address any site plan issues as well on those parcels of land. Noise pollution, that's a little bit different. There are, we have our codes and ordinances for that. And then, in order for it to be a real issue, it has to be over a certain decibel range for a certain period of time. But if there is an issue with any noise complaints, our PD goes out and addresses it. And so, but the chief hasn't spoken, so I'm going to let him talk about crime in the city and safety going forward.
I almost made it the whole night without a question.
That wasn't going to happen.
Thanks, Sarah. Now, Sarah did a great job tonight. Let's give Sarah a hand for everything she's done. So, your safety and quality of life are our top priorities at the Port St. Lucie Police Department. We have been the safest large city in the state of Florida for the past 13 years with the lowest crime rate for populations over 100,000 residents. We're very proud of that. Those are our Super Bowl rings. That is what is, we believe is what bringing a lot of people here is the quality of life and the low crime. And the cost of living is obviously a lot lower than it is down south. That's where you're seeing all that growth come up this way and from, out of state, from Miami, Broward, Palm Beach and also from other states now. So, your quality of life is our top priority. We realize there's no maintaining as good as we are. You're either getting better or you're getting worse. That's why we're always focused on continuous improvements at the Port St. Lucie Police Department and as a city overall. As the mayor touched on, we do have a strategic plan. The number one strategic goal is to be clean, safe and beautiful. So, that is the direction we are given and we have a plan to address that. Strategically, we are growing with the city. When I, when I first came here, we were 75,000 residents. We're now 225,000 residents. I've dealt with growth and our staff has dealt with growth my entire career over the past 25 years. When I started, there were three policing districts. We had four up until a year ago. Now, we have District 5 thanks to all the growth out here. Just to give everyone a little bit of a, kind of, point of view, the population out here is about the city the size of Stewart right now. So, we are planning to address that. We have two officers out here dedicated 24 hours a day. We are going to increase that to four to five next year as part of our strategic plan, to fully implement District 5. The mayor and council and the city staff have been committed to that. Next year, we're going to make it a reality. So, again, your safety is our priority and we're going to maintain that quality of life for us and make City of Port St. Lucie one of the best destinations in the state of Florida. Thank you.
Okay. We're on our last in-person question. Melissa's got, we had about over 175 people watching on Zoom tonight. So, they may have some questions, but this is our last one from the room. Are there oak trees along the sidewalks in Tradition? Will they have to be replaced with the rest of the oak trees in the city? Where will there be additional taxes to pay for them?
So, no additional taxes to pay for them. We do have areas of the city where the oak trees are infringing upon the infrastructure. We actually had a conversation on Agenda I about this in the east side of the city, East Lake Village this past Monday. And so, we have to come up with a plan to have the entire area evaluated to address those issues because we can't have the trees and the root systems infiltrating our infrastructure, especially when it comes to our utility lines. So, it does happen. There are several communities in Port St. Lucie, especially in St. Lucie West, that we've been dealing with for several years, but it's, it's an HOA issue really, where they're having the same problems with the uprooted trees and having to come up with a plan to remove and replace those trees. And so, but I want to let you know that we are Tree City USA and if you remove a tree, you got to replace the tree. So, it's not like you can rip out a ton of trees and you have no responsibility to replace them. We have a tree challenge that we meet every single month and every single year. And so, if you're going to replace it or remove it, you got to replace it. And we'll continue on that. But those things have to be evaluated depending on what area that they're in. And if it's a city-controlled area, we do evaluate that and we'll continue.
Okay, we're going to move, Melissa over here has been monitoring our Zoom comments and...
Thank, for those that are leaving, I want to thank you all for attending tonight. I really appreciate you staying as long as you have. I know it's a lot of information, so thank you.
I think we might have one more in the room right here.
Oh.
Oh.
Traffic on Village Parkway and Raleigh. They Zoom down there all hours of the night. They do wheelies. The kids are out there making all kind of noise. And we've called a few times as far as the police, not to cast dispersions, but the traffic is awful on Village Parkway and now Raleigh.
So, traffic is the number one concern for our customers, our residents, and we're dedicated to providing that high level of superior customer service. We issued last year citywide over 50,000 citations and warnings and we're on track to beat that even this year. We have one of the low tal, we have one of the lowest fatality rates in the state of Florida. So, even, we all agree, one is too many. So, we're going to continue our enforcement and our education efforts. But we are also this year moving in as part of our strategic plan to do some hotspot traffic enforcement where we're seeing a lot of repeat calls for service. So, you're going to continue to see that as we grow our traffic unit and our traffic efforts. So, we'll address any issue. If you have an issue, you can, you can call 1PSL. You will be contacted by our regional commander and he will tell you how we're going to address that issue and follow up with you on the results for that. So, we have seen, especially in South Florida, a lot of car clubs that are doing what's called street takeovers. They tried to do that up here a couple of weeks ago. We shut it down right away. Zero tolerance on that type of behavior, whether it's an adult or juvenile. You know, if we're able to catch them, they're going to be charged with ever the traffic citation and/or arrested. So... Yes, ma'am?
Okay. Any other questions that haven't been asked?
No, no, there's a few, definitely. The chief, if you don't mind coming back up, there's a bunch of people who would like to know more about the police districting in Tradition. Specifically, one of the questions is Bedford is, are you going to be taking over those streets with enforcement? But overall, what is your plan for the Tradition area? There's several questions for that.
Okay. So, Bedford Park is, those are private roadways. There are no plans as of right now to take those over. That would have to come from a request from the homeowners association to the city to enter in a public-private agreement to take over those roads and provide traffic enforcement. So, as of right now, there are no plans for that overall. In Tradition, like I mentioned before, this is now designated as District 5. So, we are going to staff that accordingly. District 5 and all of our districts, 1 through 5, have four policing zones that are carved out according to the census information that we have. And we answer 911 calls for service on those. So, you're going to see an increased level of police presence and service here within the next 18 months.
I think that's it for the chief. The next question is, how much of Western Grove is built out? Do you know that specifically?
Uh, let's go back to my slides. 25% Western Grove is built out, 25%.
Did the Tradition Land Company give this commercial land to PSL or was it purchased?
They turned it over to the city. We did not pay for it. They turned it over.
Okay. I see two new K through 8 schools. What about a high school?
Well, the new schools, correct me if I'm wrong, is, one is going to be a high school on Crosstown and the one, the other one will be a K-8 to start out. But there's a lot of other school sites that will be developed in the future.
Let's see. This one is a kind of a, is it true that there is some sort of agreement that Tradition Master has with Publix that they are the only food retailer? And they won't allow other stores like Winn-Dixie to come in?
I'm not aware. Is anyone aware of anything like that? Not that I'm aware of. Not that we're aware of. I mean, yeah, Fresh Market is coming basically across the street and then we have all these going in. So...
Who is responsible for the maintenance of the roads when the builders are gone?
If it's a city road, city, the city. And if they get turned over from a developer, the city.
This is like a two-part question, maybe even for Carmen. Is, is there going to be any, let's see, what was it? Sorry. What, any low-income housing or any kind of communities that are not in HOAs?
I am not aware of any low-income housing that is coming to the city. No developer that I have spoken to or am aware of in the last 12 years has even proposed to come in with any type of low-income or affordable housing whatsoever. If, over time, there is any type of Section 8 or low-income housing, that is regulated by the state and that is dealt with specifically between the owner and the state. The city has no regulation of that whatsoever.
Are there going to be buffers between the enormous warehouse on Village Parkway and Becker Road? Becker Road?
Well, we have buffer, we have buffers in terms of landscaping, but there's no, I don't know what they mean by any other buffers. We have landscaping plans that are, have to go into effect through the site plan and they have to go through the approval process when they're coming in, but, but nothing other than, like, there's no berms or anything that I'm aware of. And the land on, yeah, the land is commercial right on Village. It's not residential. And, yeah, and the Becker section as well, it's commercial.
Can you address the open spaces that remain in the Tradition Town Square area south of the gazebo, please? There's fenced-off signs, multi-residential development coming. Please urge Madam E to reconsider this and let people and wildlife in this area have some peace and beautiful land to enjoy.
So that's the, that's always the crux between what's really green space or open space versus what's developable land. And although it may have grass on it, that doesn't mean it's a green space. It may look, be green because the grass is green, but it's not a green space or open space. Open space has a specific designation through, through our zoning and those areas, we have several of those areas throughout the city, but that is not green space, it's developable land.
What are the percentages of each community that have been built out?
Well, we have Western Grove's 25% built out and Tradition DRI is 95% built out. I'd have to go back through each one. So if that person wants to email, I can send them an email back with that information.
Thank you. Are there going to be more lanes to turn right into where Publix and all the store areas are?
Here in Tradition? Not that I'm aware of, no.
There's a lot, sorry. When police speed enforcement begin on Village Parkway, south on Cleveland Clinic, currently it's dangerous to travel with the number of speeders. Thank you.
Never met a microphone I didn't like, so this is good. Yeah, again, we wrote 50,000 citations and warnings and I can provide communications, more specific information about Tradition and specifically how many citations and warnings have been written out here. It is, again, every month we look at the statistics and it's equally distributed over the entire city, not just, we don't just sit on Crosstown Parkway, just so everybody knows, but.
You know, one of the challenges that we have with regard to our traffic issues, which is pretty much almost impossible to regulate, is human behavior, right? So, and there's no way we would ever have enough officers to sit on every single roadway and monitor everyone's behavior. So it's, it's troublesome because we've seen over time, the behaviors have gotten worse and we do have our enforcement mechanisms. I mean, if you think about it, if we have 225,000 people in our city and 50,000 people have gotten warnings or citations, that's a big percentage of our population. And so it's, it's my hope that everyone starts recognizing that when you drive that way or you act that way, you're, you may be in a rush, but you're negatively affecting everybody around you. And it's really a responsibility of us as citizens to be mindful of each other. And it's, again, it's really hard to regulate that, but hopefully, hopefully over time we get to put a dent in that. We do put out information about, you know, hey, if, make people aware. If you're driving 40 miles an hour, the likelihood of you killing somebody if you hit them is very, very high. Whereas if you're maintaining the speed limits that are on the road and, and going slower, God forbid something like that happens, you're not as liable to kill someone at, at a slower rate of speed or their injuries may be less. So we, we put that information out to, to really try to show people and educate, to think about. It's hard, right? Because as you're going through life and you're busy, you're not always thinking of those things. Everyone's thinking about where they have to go next and how they have to get home and take care of what they have to take care of, but it's important to keep that mindset up. Yes?
Just reminding that those roads will have lights, that Tradition Parkway, Village Parkway heading down to Becker, there will be future lights.
That is true too. There'll be future intersections that will be coming online. It won't be just one road that there's no, no ability to stop or no prevention of stopping. The lights will be put in place and operational. Thank you for that.
With all the new homes being constructed, has a traffic study been done with regards to the, all the new areas being addressed? If so, can we make it available to the public?
I believe there are multiple, multiple traffic studies that have been done over time and they are available. And anything that the city has is public record. They are extremely detailed and extremely technical and so they're available, but they're not that easy to read. And again, there are multiple, so we need, if you want a specific one, then you'd have to let us know and then we can have that presented to you.
If the city isn't responsible and has no control over hospital and medical emergency services in Tradition, who do I contact and help?
I would contact Cleveland Clinic. You can contact St. Lucie Medical or HCA. They're the ones that have control over hiring and getting more doctors in and providing those services. And I'm sure we can find a phone number for anyone who needs it.
What happened to the land by St. Lucie West K through eight school? It was slated for an adventure park.
Okay. So, great question. That's on our Cameo Crosstown site. So how the adventure park came about is we determined that we needed some different alternative types of recreation and we planned for that facility or that land to be used for that. Some of the elements, I went out to the Chicago area with our Parks and Rec staff with Brad and Kelly and we went to a place called The Forge and looked at their zip lining that they have and looked like that they're climbing towers. And at that time, realized that with all the costs involved, with all the equipment necessary and the changeouts that need to be done and regulatory issues with regarding changing out that equipment and how expensive it is, that really that's not something that our Parks and Rec department could handle or should handle or that we would be able to continuously afford to operate. And so what we did, and in addition, we also determined that some of the other elements like a skate park or BMX park, that's something that we could handle because those aren't things that really make a lot of money. And we were going to talk, getting further talks with this one company to see if they'd be interested because they showed some interest in Port St. Lucie. But then we had our garbage situation happen. And so what you typically see coming off Crosstown and Cameo is now where we have our facility to take the bulk waste and the yard waste. But behind that is our, is a Public Works facility that stores our vehicles, stores equipment that our Public Works team needs. And as, we also realized that as we continue to grow, the city doesn't have that much public space, or public lands available, or city-owned land available of that size in order to house the, this equipment. So we had to relook at that and say, all right, you know what? We can't afford to give up that site. And in the future, there may need to be some type of solid waste transfer station. If we look to in the future, potentially going towards building our own solid waste division and taking control of that, that's going to be looked into for the future. So we need to keep that. Now, the elements that were promised are going to be put in our parks. We committed to that. So Tradition Regional will have the BMX pump track and Torino Regional will have the skate park. So we are still committed to keeping the promise of having those two elements in, in those two parks.
Thank you so much. You've, you've addressed grocery stores, but are there any plans to address gas stations? The Wawa seems to be overwhelmed.
There will be more gas stations eventually, but those have, those come in either through, you know, while they come in regardless through planning and zoning. I think you will see some more, especially in the Tradition area, particularly down toward Becker Road. I think there is a plan for a Wawa down there.
Is there a, another plan for a turnpike entrance off of Crosstown Parkway, maybe near PSL?
The, the Turnpike Authority is, is working on a study for that right now and there will be an interchange there in the future, but not anytime soon. The turnpike is a lot different than the, than 95 because how the turnpike makes their, obviously it's toll road and they make their money. And what they do is the Turnpike Authority determines where a need is and then they take a look at the revenues that they can collect in order to take out the necessary bonds for that project. And then what they have to do is make sure that the revenues can cover the cost of the bond. Well, that study was looked into and we are nowhere even near that yet. So that's not going to happen anytime soon. Whereas 95 is completely different because that's not a toll road and there's state transportation funding that goes towards that.
It's not really a question, but there's concern about the roundabout and, in Tradition and people are very concerned that it's from two lanes and merges into one and they're wondering if you were going to reconsider doing, repurposing that or changing that up in any way.
Not aware of that.
So they're referring to the Tradition Parkway and Community Boulevard. Yes, that is permitted right now and will be getting constructed soon to get the Tim vehicle back off of the roundabout pavement area and then therefore the two-lane roundabout will be fully reestablished.
There you go. Understanding that the developer has a lot of control over their development rights in Tradition, will the resident height requirement at least be enforced?
So depending on the MPUD determines what the height requirements are. In Tradition, it is 35. However, there was an amendment that came through and after a review, the city council did decide to grant an amendment to allow two of the buildings to be 47 feet. But each MPUD has the height requirements in that, in those MPUDs. And of course, if there are any future changes that any developer wants to make, they have to come back through and do an amendment to the MPUD in order to do that. But there are different requirements for different types of development. So residential in some areas is 35, non-residential in some areas is 100, some areas is 50. It just depends on where the location is and where it fits in the MPUD.
Why are you permitting construction of housing that exceeds the availability to provide proper police and fire protection?
So, again, the development rights have been granted, but as far as police and fire, I think we've established that already. We are planning for both and have stations in the works and we also have our District Five in the works as well. So we are properly planning for all of that for the future.
What are you doing about Fair Green coming to Tradition when you're driving towards Tradition and Crosstown, you can't possibly proceed as it backs up? It's a disaster.
I don't, I don't really understand the question. Left-hand turn lane?
Yep. Left-hand turn.
Are they talking about turning left onto Crosstown or turning left off of Crosstown?
It's backed up, turning left on Fair Green.
Oh, oh, so as far as a turn lane? The turn lanes, meaning like extending the turn lane? Don't know if that's been looked at or not.
At this time, it has not been looked at.
So there, there are several areas in the city that we are, will be looking at, Public Works is going to be looking at as far as addressing capacity issues and that does include looking at different areas where there are turn lanes that don't have, are exceeding the capacity and ways that we can extend them. And so I know that's being looked at now and so we'll, they'll be evaluating those, all those areas.
The roundabout at Community is so backed up because of the increase in homes and students attending the schools. A major accident is moments away from happening. Have you guys talked to Madam E about this and is Madam E keeping up with this roundabout?
I think Colt just addressed the roundabout at Community and Tradition Parkway there, but what's going to be done?
Okay. Will all these new people result in higher taxes or will they result in lower taxes?
Well, hopefully not higher taxes. As I mentioned, we have to look every year at what's happening with our revenues and expenditures and we do not anticipate raising taxes at all. We want to keep them as low as we possibly can. But again, growth does not pay for itself, so you do need more city services and that has to be evaluated every year.
There's another golf cart question, but maybe we can go into detail. They really want to know is, the rumor is you can drive on Southwest Village at 35 miles per hour. Can someone get ticketed using the golf carts on the sidewalks?
So golf carts are only legal on the, on public roadways if they are registered and meet all the safety requirements by Florida State's statute. I don't know them all off the top of my head, but I know they involve mirrors, seatbelts, registration, just like any other motor vehicle. Within the private communities though, they can be driven according to HOA requirements. I would just ask people to still be safe and be mindful and don't let juveniles drive golf carts, extremely dangerous. We get a lot of complaints out here within the Tradition Square of people drive, of kids especially driving golf carts. Just would warn against that, but they are not, to my knowledge, allowed on sidewalks unless they meet requirements of certain size, which is eight feet and wider and meeting the requirements for low-speed vehicles. So you can get ticketed if you are on public roadways and, you know, we have taken, you know, try an educational approach on it. However, out in Tradition, because of the amount of complaints, first time is a warning, second time is a citation. So we do check the records for that.
We have a couple more questions where since it's almost nine o'clock.
Yeah.
Putting in the chat that were any questions, we'll finish the ones that we have.
Okay. Yep.
This one's for Chiefs, Para and the mayor and they're just following up on your question about the cottages and the springs. You're saying that they are fire-safe and even though they're made of compressed wood and how is this allowed?
Yeah, they're allowed under the Florida Building Code. In addition to that, when I said they're fire, they're fire-protected. In other words, they're sprinkled buildings. If they're more than one story, they're going to have stand pipes in there for fire protection. They have a fire pump that takes the water from the, the water source and increases the pressure. Those are the things that we do to premitigate those, those fire hazards.
With all the growth and us being a very safe city, is there plans to increase lights in residential areas? Some roads are very dark, especially around the Becker area.
So we have a street lighting program in place for those people who want to petition to have streetlights on their street. We have a process for that and you can call the city clerk's office or my office at 871-5159 and our staff can give you information on what that process looks like. In addition, if you just don't want to go through that process to get streetlights on your street and you want to have a light at your residence, if there is a pole between your house and your neighbor's house, you can pay a monthly fee in order to have a light on that pole at your property. I have that because I didn't want to go through the process. I have that because I didn't want to go through the process of bugging my neighbors and asking them if they wanted that. So I filled out an application years ago with FPNL, and I pay $12 a month to have a light on the pole that shines onto my property. So that is something that you can do as well.
Will the Port St. Lucie Police Department set up community bicycle patrols as well as it is in the cruisers?
So our bicycle unit is an ancillary responsibility. We've expanded it over the years. I actually just signed a purchase order to purchase 10 new bicycles and outfit our officers with the proper equipment. So during the holiday season and special events, you will see more bicycle patrols here in Tradition and other areas throughout the city.
I think you answered all the questions. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all. Yes, ma'am. So they are highly controversial in, in the state as far as their effectiveness or not. I've sat on several committees through the Florida League of Cities about the use of red light cameras. There have been cities that put them in, and then cities that have taken them out. Because it's been so controversial, and there's been really no consistency, it's not something that we've ever talked about that I'm aware of, and as far as installing that type of camera system. So, so no, there's, there's no plan right now to install any type of red light camera system to ticket people in the city. And again, it's, they are very controversial as to their effectiveness. The technology goes out, and there's been several studies across the state with cities that have actually taken them out as a result of, of that. That's it? Okay. All right. Thank you all so much. It's almost nine o'clock. Thank you for staying as long as you've had. I hope this has been helpful to you. And again, it is recorded, so if you want to have it at a later time, we can make sure you, direct you to the city website or send you the link to it as well. Thanks again.